Stay in the court.
Our pledge to leave it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off with a roll call. Mayor Vinti?
Here.
Mayor Pochettino? Councilor Lee?
Here.
Councilor Humbert? Councilor Crane?
Here.
We have a corner. We're going to proceed.
Thanks. This time I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
You want a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item A. Really want to just turn this over to the Comprehensive Plan Committee and then answer anything we can as chair or the A's office to any of the other committees, obviously working together and reporting back to the Comprehensive Plan Committee. So at this time, Tillah, are you gonna take the lead on this?
Hi, I'm Mayor. Thank you. Mayor Council, thank you for allowing us to present today at your work session. My name is Atilla Valenti. I'm the co-chair of the Comprehensive Trail Committee and also co-chair of Trails Recreation and Trails Committee. Mary Ann McDonald is the other co-chair of the Complain Committee that is pulling in remotely today. Council and Mayor established this Complain Committee last spring with the objective of revising the 2006 Comprehensive Plan that Village re-then adopted back in 2006. So it's been a while. And the committee's been active on a number of different fronts, talking to the other working committees, looking at, understanding issues as we go forward that. But I thought I would share what I hope to get out of today's session, make sure we're all on the same page with that before we go further. But one, I want to quickly overview, provide an overview of the Complain benefits. So we understand why it's important for this community. I wanted to cover the key elements of a comprehensive plan, which moves into what we're expecting and anticipating from the committee, their assignments and the timeline for each committee. And then third is, we'll talk about the committee assignments and timeline. And the fourth item is a discussion on the issues that the committees have. And a couple of different questions, what's driving your interest? What do you know, what do you know about existing conditions? What more information do you need? And how would you like to engage the community? Because I think it's, we really get, I need a feedback loop. So that's kind of our outline for today. That is okay with everyone? We look forward on that? Okay, thank you. Comprehensive plans are sometimes documents that localities despise going through. It's like this exercise of generating paper and generating goals and then, okay, we're done with it. Let's go back to our dairy day, putting out fires. And a lot of communities go back and just put out fires until, and you later in this Complain do again because state requires Complans about every 10 years. And we never get past putting out fires. So the Complans, if done through the way we're doing it now, which I think is fascinating that we have this many working committees and 60-plus citizen representatives on this. Usually, communities, communities say they hire a consulting firm, go do it for me. And let me, let me read your draft in a year and I'll sign up on it. And we don't, when we have a really good opportunity to continue this community engagement, I think that's great for us as we're moving forward. But why should we have a community, a comprehensive plan? Okay, it allows us to be proactive versus reactive to issues and changes that arise over time. It's not putting out those fires all the time. It allows the community to identify factors influencing shaping the community and consider that competing interests can be balanced. It provides guidance for orderly growth, development, and physical appearance of the community. So we're not popping up some structure here in some design and next year the street signs change design, the year trail signs change design, and we have this constant change. So it's orderly growth and physical appearance. Provides an opportunity, think regionally, especially regarding growth utilities, community services like healthcare, which is a hot topic for us now, and transportation. And it sets up a community for grant funding success by clarifying needs and demonstrating public support for certain projects or improvements. Money almost follows, almost always follows a good plan. So in this case, we've got grant writers in the community, but without having the good demographic data that's needed and without having community support for a trail or a road project, it's hard to go after the money. So we're showing through our Complan and through our demographic data that we have interest in these projects. And it's easier for the grant writers to get the content for these projects through the Complan information. It serves as a guide for decisions over time, no matter if there's a turnover in leadership, council and/or staff, provides for stability and predictability. So another key thing about a comprehensive line, I think, is, and the reason we have 60 people present is that 60 people are all going to be advocates and activists for moving this in the right direction. So in five years from now, and there's a whole, potentially a whole new leadership in this village, there should be 60-plus people that still say, hey, we spent a lot of time on this. This is the decision, the direction the community want to go. Let's go after it. So it doesn't let the Complan be neglected or forgotten about. So it's really important on this piece of that plan. And the last thing is that the build's consensus come in for elected officials and provides guidance for future decision-making. So what we hope to accomplish, our committee is, is get to that goal, action item, maybe some implementation strategy, but it's really going to be leadership and staff retreats figuring out what those details are. What are those pieces of the puzzle? If we have this goal, we have these actions, what are the pieces of puzzle to get us there? And that's going to take a lot of, probably facilitated conversations among leadership and staff, department heads and others, and line officers and line staff on, how do we get all this done? So we can, we can get the, the committee can provide us with this general direction. We think it's right with all the interests going on, but it's up to you guys to figure out the details. So the key elements of a Complan include the existing conditions. Where are we now? You know, what's happened with roads in the last couple of years and last month for that matter? What's happened with public health? What are our current situation? Because we can't create goals and strategies without understanding our existing conditions and understanding those issues. So that's our first phase where now is really understanding where we're at. As long as we know those issues, we can turn those issues into goals and actions and then implement straight, implement, implementation strategies. We always need a land use map. And the 2006 land use map focused on the northwest quadrant. I mean, that was like 90% of that document was focusing on northwest quadrant and all the energy went towards getting infrastructure out there. We were pretty successful with that to some degree. So that counts for a lot. And then we have a plan outline, which I'm gonna let Allison cover in a second. So far, we've gone, we've gone through this plan outline, revised it about six times from what came out of the 2006 plan. And then maybe revised it much more, but all the major sections on that. And then we have, so those are the main elements, is the existing conditions, the issues, goals, and actions. And what we're asking now, between now and March, which we're gonna get into in just a second, is the existing conditions, issues, goals, and actions. And then implementation strategies, we'll be covering probably in the springtime. We can talk about milestones. I mean, maybe Mary Ann, if you could go over our milestones and calendar a bit later in the presentation that we covered recently?
I don't have one in front of me, but I could try to remember.
I remember most of it, I think. Well, let's cover the plan outline that we're thinking about. Allison, thank you.
Well, you probably haven't put the old Comprehensive Plan outline to, you know, memory or anything. But just to let you know, there are 13 sections. Well, one of them is the executive summary, but they go over things like sustainability, community character, Mountain View Boulevard corridor design, land use, northwest quadrant, recreation and open space, quality of life, natural resources, transportation, economic development, and utilities. A lot, you don't kind of remember at all, but just kind of listen to the general, just of what those headers are. And what we did was we tried to take those headers and say, where do those fit into more of a village organization? So how does this village organize? Where are the departments like? And when a department has a section they can go to, or the leadership can go to and say, what is it for this department? It's much easier than having to go to five different places or 10 different places in the plan. So what we did was we put in a section on land use and plan development. I mean, we had one that was called, well, no, land use. But then there's all this other development stuff in many other places. So we wanted to put all of it in there and then key in on the things that are obviously a priority for us. There's a lot of really good stuff in the old plan. And we're going to utilize a lot of that information, but we have to update a lot of it as well. So for instance, in land use and plan development, I won't spend too much time on this, but just trying to give you guys a general overview of what we're looking at here for the plan. This section includes things like the resort character, the mountain, the character of the whole village. You know, what is the architecture and design that we might want to have for this village? A focal point for the village. And I hear that over and over and over again from people saying, where is the center of this, this community? A preferred land use and zoning scenario. We have all the ordinances and planning, land use already built, but maybe there's some things that we want to build into that, that we can add to it. And then support development of convenient, affordable housing options for the Angel Fire workforce. So we've got our committee on a workforce housing committee, right, that helps support that. So all that information on those committees that might build into this information goes into that section. The second section is water, wastewater, and solid waste. So this is kind of like your public works group, your department at the village. And so do we have enough water for our community? You know, what is our water right situation? What are our conservation plans? You know, what, how are we using our water? When do we use our water? How much leaking do we have in our lines, in our tanks? And then, you know, for as far as wastewater, is our wastewater collection system adequate for what we need? And in our solid waste, we have our slash program. We have our recycling. We need to build on our recycling. So things like that would go into that section. Section three, roads and transportation. And this has to do with, what's the, everybody knows, we have a committee on this, but this condition of the surface of our roads and the drainage design, you know, how is that affecting things like our wetlands and our streams, as well as just your driveway? Expanding transit services, including airport and just getting cars to move around the town. Pedestrian access. Then section four is recreation and outdoor spaces. And what we have in here is improve and maintain and create recreational opportunities throughout the community. Plan for a public park near the center of the village. You know, what are the priorities we have for that section? Maintain our trails, of course. Section five, community live and tourism. Brings in several of the old plans' sections, things like information and communication plan for the, for the community. Community events and core community activities, such as the farmer's market, the library, Woods of Angel Fire. Just that whole, what is our tourism for the community? Encourage development of arts and cultural activities. And, and then educational opportunities. Section six, economic development. This is one where we don't have anybody, we have people assigned on our committee to each of these sections. And we don't have anybody assigned to economic development. And it's many different places throughout. We've got, we've identified all the committees that might have information to support this. Things like workforce housing committee, tourism department, chamber of commerce, resort, airport committee. All of these things need to be built into things like our economic development plan. There was one done in 2019. And it is very good, but it does need to be updated to know what our current economic situation is. Yeah.
And I'll just let you know too, on that topic that, given all the communities that we, or committees that we currently have going, several of them will start phasing themselves out. And so when that occurs, we intend to, the next two committees that we intend to start, one being an economic development committee. And in addition to that, for lack of a better term, a healthcare committee.
Yes. That's one of the main sections we have. So yeah, you can kind of understand what would go into an economic development section. Section seven is a brand-new section, wasn't covered at all in the previous Comprehensive Plan, which is public health and safety. Things like our police department, our fire department services, and medical services. Section eight is natural resources and environmental protection. We had a natural resources one before and we had sustainability. It was all over the place. So just bringing all into one section on that. We've got wildfire mitigation in there, air quality, and preserving and protecting the natural beauty of Angel Fire. So that's kind of the overview of what we think may be so it gives you an idea of the outline. Do I need to jump in this on? All right. Do they have any questions or comments about that? Anything we missed?
We've got 13, but I've got eight here.
Yes, that's exactly right. So the old one had 13.
Oh, okay.
And the new one has eight. And what I was trying to say is we're, we're just trying to consolidate. And we're also trying to make this thing much more user-friendly. In other words, you can grab a section of it and go with that to a department of the village or
So Allison mentioned a couple of committees, but we have the Trails and Recreation Committee, Wetlands, Infrastructure, Tourism, Economic Development Group, working going on, Public Works, Fire Adaptive Community, Lodger's Tax, Airport, Workforce Housing, Night Sky, Planning and Zoning, Public Health, and the Quality Life stuff. So those are all different topics and scenes. There's all some energy in all those topics.
So real quick, sorry to interrupt, but there are village committees that have been set up that are some of those. Other ones are independent.
Nonprofit.
Yeah, like Night Skies or Dark Skies, and then the Wetlands. And then others are just the departments we're working with, you know, we're going to meeting with them and getting information from them. So that's the resource.
Yeah, so we, so we are, all those sources are important for the overall development and project. All right, so we're asking that each of the committees, or and the departments and the other, the Dark Sky or Wetlands, to focus on issues and existing conditions right now. So the plan needs to have an existing conditions section. And I don't, we're not looking for volumes of narrative. We're kind of looking for bullet points of paragraph or two on these topics. We really need to understand that so everyone is on the same page for this. So if we are pursuing some project, we can say, well, here is, here is the existing condition and here's the issues we're raising. So we're asking each one of the committees as to develop and provide the Complan Committee with an existing conditions report, whatever is there. And we are asking for that process to occur in this next 30 days. Through the middle of November, actually, is the existing conditions. That, that could be staffing, budget, inventory of amenities, condition assessment. So all the trail system that the village manages, what's the condition of those? How long is it? What do we know what the users on it? Who's not using it? What if we can help understand existing conditions?
One of just kind of few examples?
Yeah, I'll give that, yes, I'll cut to that. So what is, the example, like wastewater, water wastewater is, we have 150 miles of water lines serving X number of meters, X number of homes. So with those data, it would be really important to know X number of feet of two-inch water lines, X number of feet of four-inch, four-inch water lines. Amount of permitted water rights. So those could be the data text that helps us understand where we are. Because it is different. We are here 130 miles, 150 miles of roads. What really is it? Or if we don't have the information, can we get it? Is it really important to have to make further decisions? So that existing conditions is a baseline. We're looking at baseline. Let's see, the Wetlands work, it's already bringing in guns.
It's already working.
Okay. So we're asking each one of the committees and these others to give us a deliverable, a succinct description of existing conditions, either in paragraph or bulleted format. And I'll go over that timeline in a second. The second one is a generated list of issues, challenges, and opportunities facing whatever it is. So some, some committees, it may just be opportunities. Maybe there's opportunities for Music of Angel Fire that is not really an issue or a problem, but I've got opportunities that we can do cool things with. So the second task for each committee is to generate this list of issues, challenges, and opportunities. This can be done through a group exercise. That's how the Trails Group will start working on tomorrow. But it's also worthwhile to get some feedback on these. So could you take your list of issues on a topic and take it by the Rotary? Or take it by the High School Honor Society? Or take it by another committee? What we're after here is trying to get the bumblebee thing to pollinate. So I've got an idea that might be good for wetlands or roads. So we want to pollinate each other's committees with ideas and not just be stuck in our own, our own silo. So we want to make sure we can cross-pollinate these different committees with other ideas. So the second task that's going to be due for the committees through by end of Janu-, end of, middle of January is a concise description of issues, challenges, and opportunities that inform the goals that we're going to be developing for each of these topics. And then from January 15th to January, February 28th, we're going to work, take some goal statements and develop goals based from those issues. And your committee, your product, your topic may have one goal, it may have five goals, it may have seven goals. What we're going to start seeing on this though is that some goals that are going to overlap and interrelate between the different committees. And that's our committee responsibility, the Complan Committee, is to start trying to make sense of where there's overlap between these different committees. So it's not all, again, not all siloed. We're going to advocate for a SMART goals process. So the earlier version, a lot of the goals are just a statement. But a SMART goal says, the goal has to be specific. It has, what do you want to accomplish? Who should be included? And when you want to do this? It's measurable. How can you measure progress and know you've met your goal? So do we want to increase paved roads by 10% or decrease paved roads by 10%? Is there a measure in there that we can say, yeah, in five years, we were successful in this goal? And this can also help with accountability by the departments and by management to make sure that the department, if the department has his goal to pursue, then they've got their marching orders for sale, what they're going to be working on. It's achievable. So this is really an important part. I think every committee has taken into account the fiscal capacity of the village and the staff capacity of the village to, for a realistic goal. So we can't go massive, huge, great pine, the sky goals, knowing there's no way we'll ever get that done because we don't have the money, we don't have the time, we don't have the resources. So we have to be realistic and it's got to be achievable. And it's also going to be relevant. Is it aligned with our overall objectives? And this goes back to, the relevant piece may tie into thinking about what, in the earlier frame, what's the vision for the community? What do we want to be? So these goals tie into that for that relevant part. It's time-bound. What's the deadline? Three years, five years, 10 years? When, when is this goal going to accomplish? And each year, we're going to get steps to get towards that. And so those are the SMART goals. And we're going to ask the committees to think about a general goal statement and trying to put some of these measures on that. May not all, may not have all of them on there, but at least achievable and measurable and specific are the, I think, key things to think about for each one of the goals. So then I think most committees will probably come up with four to eight goals. I mean, the water, water system has, going to have goals on water delivery, on wastewater, on water consumption and water conservation. There may be four or five goals just of that one topic. So that is going to be up to each community to think, are we covering everything? And then there's the development of the recommended actions. The recommended actions could be also called objectives or strategies, but we're going to go with recommended actions. Here are the, here are the key steps we need to take to achieve this goal. But that's not going to give in the details of, okay, Public Works has got to do these three things. And Recreation has got to do those two things. And Economic Development has got to pursue those two grants to do this. So there, all those little details are further down into the mix of, beyond the recommended actions. And we're hoping for recommended actions by the end of March for each committee. And we're going to be trying to task everyone to this. So the council liaison's position is to hopefully challenge your, your committees and your committee chairs to keep, continue on these tasks. And if there's groups that are, committees that are sunsetting, if they've already delivered this to you, we can just incorporate that. So we're not asking for new stuff. So I know, for example, Fire Adaptive has been working for years on this stuff and it's, probably knows what the goals they have and actions. Workforce Housing has been doing a lot of stuff. And so you've already are there. We're just going to build it in. So we're not asking for new stuff, but to make sure we have what you've been working on. And trying to package it all together. Okay, so questions on timeline or goals in that part, that process? That some, if it makes sense? Any clarification questions?
Yes, sir.
Do you have copies of this online, so in case we don't?
Yes, yes, there is a bunch of propaganda on the back table that has all of this on there for you. There's all the worksheets and everything for your committees. And I think we have, I think we've covered a couple of different things. So the, the next part, a little more detail, Allison's going to hand out and go over an example of a template. We created the template for each committee, or the committees to use. And we created one on water and wastewater and solid waste, which Allison has a professional familiarity with. And she's going to cover that for us.
Yeah, so what I am, what's going around right now is an example and a blank for the committees to consider utilizing and filling out. So Atilla was saying is, in this chart, all right, there's the blank one and there's the one that actually says water, wastewater. The first key topic to a is water supply and availability. So what Atilla, basically this went over is kind of like the blank. This is how we do it. And here's just some examples. These are not fully fleshed out at all. This is not final. It was just first, first, first draft. But it just kind of gives you an idea of the information level of detail we're looking for. So for instance, for water supply and availability being the first key topic under water, wastewater, and solid waste management. You know, we want to capture what the community has accomplished up to date. Things like the skater system that's currently going in right now. It's already partially in and it's really quite impressive. And that's going to give us real-time information on water availability, or water supply, really. And how many meters have we replaced, for instance? You know, we're going to capture what we've done as a community to improve our, our, our situation. You know, tank setup, things like that. And I know this much about all of that. But I'm meeting with the department reps, with Kurt and with Arlen to get all this information. You know, and as Atilla already mentioned, some of the existing conditions. You know, like one of the existing conditions we have is how much water do we lose when we have a leak? And how much water do we lose over the year? Maybe we don't have real good information on that, but we can have an estimate and try to get to some idea of where is our highest priority for improving our water availability? And is it reducing the leaking lines or the leaking lines? Or are they just really a small thing that looks really big? You know, purchasing and leasing additional water right? That's been in the Complan for a long time. People know about this. It's nothing new. But it, you know, we need to have it as a key goal that we go after. So as you can see, are you guys all looking pretty much at the one that's filled out? All right. So.
The blank tempted to pull this screen out.
Oh, right. Okay. So so what we've done is So, so what we've done is we have our previous accomplishments, our existing conditions, which is really our data collection, that's where this spot we're in right now, we need to get a lot of information that helps us decide what are our primary challenges. Well, your primary challenge might be, or as Attila mentioned, opportunities and issues might be available, what's your available water? You have an available water issue. And what are the implications? If that's not addressed, well, we might have a limit on community water use, we might have a limit, a reduced ability to grow as a community. Our goal statements might be something like, increase water supply by X percent by 2030. And that's something that's very measurable, it has a timeline, and then how do you get there? The recommended actions are general, they're not detailed, detailed, exactly how you're going to get there, or we're going to go get a, you know, contract with Rotone, and we're going to lease the water rights, or we're going to go and buy the water from CS Ranch, or whatever it is. But it's, here's all the things that we could approach to improve our water supply for our water availability, and which one of them is going to be priority? All right? Which one is going to give us the most thing for the buck? So that's, and maybe there's two or three of them that we can, you know, doing the conservation plant at the same time as going after water rights, it makes sense. But if you're saying, well, we're going to spend this X money on reader lines, when we really could spend that money here on a different priority that will get us just the same result, then we've got to decide which one is, was the one we'd want to go after. So, I just thought I would give you this example, you can peruse it. There's a section in here on wastewater treatment and septic systems. And one of the interesting things, just kind of a little aside, but it also is just something that comes up when you go through this, is how one area might have a goal that can support another area. And one of the things we have, and I know that this community really wants to increase its wastewater treatment coverage of the community, and we are not fully utilizing our wastewater treatment capacity. And the interesting thing is, if we were to make a, you know, increase the number of lines, the number of entities that were on the line on wastewater, we would have more wastewater, and we could actually get credit for that wastewater to support our water availability, because we are very limited in what water we have. And so here you have, wow, that came out, that if we increase this, it's going to increase this. So, just kind of a neat little thing that just, you never know. So, does anybody have any questions? We'd love to have some discussion about this. If you have any questions or any thoughts, yes.
You say you had a template for each committee?
We do not. We have a template that still has a title on it, that's water, wastewater, but that's just for you to replace, and you can use that for a committee. And you can add as many topics as you need, or take some out, it's just a template for you to utilize. Yeah. How do we get them all, these templates? We just mail it to them all?
I believe we'll have to, since there's not a, we don't have a Google site that will, we, you'll email the clean templates each, the two, each committee chair.
Yeah.
That would be our ad.
Yeah. And Attila already went over the other two outlines. Mary Ann, please, go for it.
In our, in our notice for this meeting, I sent out an email with the template, the example, the schedule, and the SMART description. There were four documents attached to the invitation for this meeting today. So all the committee chairs should have that at their, at their use.
Okay, all right. So do we want to ask any committee chairs to go run at their issues or run at?
Yeah, I think so.
And if anybody has any comments on these later, if they want to come up to me or whatever.
Yeah, so have y'all considered a category in this of legislative priorities? Because, for example, right now, we are a septic tank-driven village, you know, 70% of our homes are on, maybe more, are on septic systems. We get no credit for water return, returning to the aquifer from septic systems. If we were to take it out of the septic system and put it through our wastewater treatment plant and pump it into the Siena Gia.
I always get corrected, sorry.
If we did that, we would get credit, which is what Allison said, is the thing, right now, like, in last quarter, we produced just enough affluent water to, basically, we had to replat to our sludge to keep dust on the sludge down. So we didn't get to put hardly any into the creek, because we're not generating enough. If everybody was here, we'd be getting credit for all that water against our water rights. But since it goes into the septic system, which, when you, when you put it in the Siena Gia.
That's correct. That's right. I mean, it's a little wet.
I got a story I'll tell you.
The elders are sad.
I embarrassed myself. Who is this vigil guy? He has his name on all the buildings. Long story. Anyhow, so, right now, that's a legislative change. And, yeah, it may be an uphill battle, I don't know, I'm just using that as an example, but it just.
And on that same topic, snowmaking.
Yes.
Yeah.
No credits.
Exactly. So we, we know about, there was a study done at Ski Santa Fe, right? Where they were looking at getting snowmaking credits. I, that's one of the things we need to look into and find out what they did, because we thought we were going to be able to utilize that same ratio for here.
So I will tell you, I was told two weeks ago by our water master that Santa Fe was successful, and they get return credits for snowmaking. Why we don't get it is because we haven't chosen to fight the legal battle.
And that's on here.
So anyhow, my point is, that was just one example, but I think we need to, in this plan, we need to also be considering legislative priorities that we could pursue.
I think it's a good thing to build into each section, so, something I did not cover, and I'm really good at you brought this up, in these, at the end of each key topic section, there are two headers for timeline and milestones for recommended actions and funding supporting. I think here would be a great place to have a legislative priority, if there is such a thing. That could be something we could add and see how we would pursue it through that, either that route or not. Would that work in the same way as?
I think so.
Okay.
And the recommended actions that were, that everyone's proposed can reflect a policy, a program, a physical project, or even a promotion. So I think you could, all those are fair game as actions or pieces. So policy, you know, you have a policy that says, hey, you got to use a sidewalk if it's there, and now you're plowing those sidewalks in the winter, because you've got a ordinance that says we've got to, people need sidewalks. So other communities have done sidewalks. Cuba, for example, 550 through town, put in nice sidewalks, DOT just blows the snow on there, and it stays on there through April, because they have no policy that says snow removal of sidewalks. So we're ahead on some things. So you can, we can put policy in these things, and I think that fits, and maybe we, we might pull all this stuff out and have a legislative priority subsection that has pulled all these pieces out. And if you guys are pursuing, I know you have, you know, people working in Santa Fe for us, working those things, so how do we, how does that fit into that? So it's all part of the puzzle.
And we do have a lobbyist.
Yeah, right. So that's exactly, that fits in real well, so we can see where that goes, like that. Questions? Anything else from the audience so far, the committee chairs? So we do also have a sign-in sheet for all the committee chairs, somewhere, there's one here, or there's another one somewhere. We'd like all the committee chairs to at least sign in today, we'll just have that open around the room. So I wanted to take a little time, if it's okay, to think about, maybe a discussion on issues. So I have three questions for everyone to think about, real quick, is what's driving your interest and passion? And that's kind of the issue piece. What do you know, existing conditions, and how do you want to engage the community? Does anyone want to share what their committee's been challenged with working on? If not, we're going to end pretty quick.
Or you just go around the room and ask each person?
Well, I think, I'll just let you know, I think the liaisons are going to be the bigger piece of that conversation today. Unfortunately, Mayor Pro Tim Howe, he's the liaison to the Rose and Infrastructure Committee. I can speak somewhat to that. Councilor Humbert is on the top line, so with you folks here, I don't think we're missing too much there. Jeff leads several committees, I'm on the Airport Transfer Committee, and Jake does on several other committees. So however you'd like to address them, I think we could, you know.
I think it'd be good to hear just a couple of the big topics that the groups are working on, start see through, like, hey, I need to go talk to that committee, another committee. So I think, I don't think any of you guys have enough time during your council meetings and others to share that kind of stuff.
I think you've gone extensively now, because usually, usually it updates if there is.
Yeah, okay.
There is quite a bit to offer.
Yeah. So I think we should offer a little bit if we can, and spend a little time on those kind of three topics, and maybe, as a group, we delve in that topic about how do we engage the community? We are now tentatively, we definitely know we need a feedback, once we have the issues and goals figured out, we need to find a way to engage the broader community, so beyond the 60 people, to get some, some ground truthing, are we all on the right track? Because I personally have not heard any from other committee ask the Rec Trails Committee, hey, what do you guys think about this topic? So we still need better interchange between the working groups, and I'm hoping that we can start that today with better interchange and coordination through all the different working groups and liaisons.
So, one thing that I would recommend y'all look into, if you haven't considered, is the Workforce Housing, Councilor Crane and the Workforce Housing Committee has already gone out and done a survey of our businesses and the employees in those businesses, and has a tool set up, and, you know, no need to reinvent the wheel. And I think working with them, you know, if you guys want to interface with the community, that might be the best way, because the challenge with, you know, doing live, which is what everybody would naturally prefer to do, is, you know, availability of people is, you know, I mean, people have lives and whatever, doctor's appointments and jobs and things, and I think with today's technology, surveys can be a great tool to try and get feedback, because people can kind of respond at their leisure.
And I think it's really, what you keyed in on is, that group went for the community that knows the most about the issues, right? So the survey went to the businesses and the employees, and it came directly from that, that committee. Obviously, the comp plan committee can't go out and put this out, because we don't know the intricate details and the questions that a single committee might ask, but we would like those committees, like, I know the Trails Committee did a survey as well, and I actually got it, because I'm on the tracker group, and, you know, was able to respond to that, because I was familiar with a lot of that. But if you were to put it out to the entire community at large, unless we're talking about something that is like the community center kind of thing, I mean, I hear that from everyone I ask, everyone, they say, oh, what's, where is Angel Park? You know, what is Angel Park? You know, and it's kind of interesting. You know, I just ask people here and there, you know, and I know you guys are working on that, right?
Another strategy on that topic might be a newsprint, kind of community conversation that kind of lists the big issues, lists the big topics, lists the big goals, and maybe it's, maybe we buy a couple of pages in Santa Circle News in the springtime and push it all in that, and then use that same as a PDF document that could be shared on the village website and linked to the social media pages for feedback.
I'll just say, a good start, I feel like we have, and as Greg Ralph and Tourism Department have been putting out what we're calling the Village Voice. And we can, we can easily expand on that, and we're trying to use it, you'll notice that each issue gets a little more, a little larger, a little more in detail, and sometimes there's, there's more information than we can even fit that we'd like to share. But that's a good one that we feel like, not only residents, but second homeowners get that information, you know, there's not a lot of people outside of here that subscribe to the InChin Circle News, for instance.
Right.
So we're trying to use that one as a, as a voice to the constituents, whether they're full-time or part-time here.
What's the feedback with one that? So far, so good? Some good responses?
It's been great, it's been great feedback. It's like everything else, you know, here, it's not really publicly, but one-off, people really appreciate when that's brought up, so it's.
Are you subscribed to that?
It is really, I think this will be the third or fourth issue that's going to be going out, so, so like, it'll go out in November, reporting back on when we get it on October.
So do you subscribe to that?
It comes in your water bill.
And there, and there's, and we put them here at Villa Hall, so you can walk by and you can come in and pick one up.
And we can work with Tourism to start publishing it in different places, share it on the village website, get it out on the social media.
Yeah.
That would be a big, it's on the social media as well.
We're cautious about how much we put on social media, managing comments and that sort of thing, we haven't.
Well, we could just, you know, send the link to the village website.
And then we'll, kind of, people share it, and they can do whatever they want on their page.
Right, so we would be open for comment at that point, if you want to comment.
Like a survey link.
Yeah, survey link, or a QR code, or something that says, here's the Village Voice of the comp plan topic, okay? All right, so if we were to want to pursue that in the early, you know, maybe in March, when we've got a good handle on these things, should we work with Greg or?
Greg and Brandon, I think right now would be the, we can evaluate it over the course of this.
Okay.
And see who's best to handle, but right now, they're the ones handling the Village Voice.
Okay.
Attila, you're trying to get issues and stuff out there, do you think you can start us off with the Trails Committee, maybe?
Sure.
With your one, two, threes?
Yes, Recreation Trails Committee was combined, so Shay, Shay with the Community Center is our, is our village liaison, Councilor Leaks is our council liaison to the Rec and Trails Committee, thanks. And we have, we're meeting every two weeks, a number of different topics right now, our, our issues are, I guess our existing conditions are unknown, some, there's still some questions on what sections of trail are owned by the village and owned by the resort, who manages what. So management and oversight of some of the trails is, is an existing condition and issue for us. Another is, issue for us is, we don't have a complete assessment, condition assessment of all the trails, including resort greenbelt stuff. And we have created a condition assessment form, and we'll be relying, hopefully, on community volunteers, after some training, and going out and assessing the greenbelt trails with, with resort staff and village staff, to get a good handle on what, where we're at, what we see on the village trails. On recreation, there's a lot of energy on Allen Fields, there's a lot of energy on the skate park, and what it's going to look like, and it's going to be a skate park combination pump track for bicycles, for the BMX style bicycles, is a topic. Location, you know, we're grappling with, is it better here in the village, or is it better out at Allen Fields? And the consensus and things would be Allen Fields. But then we're dealing with access issues to Allen Fields, we're looking at a priority from the 2018 Trails Priorities, which is extending the Frank Young Trail to where it currently ends, all the way to Allen Fields and, and the high school. So it'll provide both a, walk the school route, bike the school route, and then let those kids easier, have a better access right to Allen Fields, since they use those pretty regularly, so that's underway. I believe there's engineering work being done in Allen Fields to, to put in some amenities, such as lighting, and I believe a restroom facility, and possibly eventually a concession stand for that, so. So we've seen some development there. And uh those are the big things we're talking about uh right now. Also adaptive trails, so this past summer, some adaptive users from Albuquerque uh came up. They're on pan cycles and motorized tricycles. Um they rode the greenbelt trails, loved it, came back and rode the mountain on their uh adaptive bike. Most of these guys are um paraplegics or um and they had a great time. So that inspired the resort to start thinking about how we identify the trails up here that are potentially great for adaptive users.
Which also with that transform, you know, goes into lodgers tax, bringing heads and beds where those communities can work together.
And then we have a veterans healing space here. And what I've learned over my time doing trail work is that um a black greenbelt trail, a black paved trail is not a challenge. So how do I get on the greenbelt trails and how far can I go? So our role is to help identify what is adaptive and do we need to make any modifications to adaptive use? And then market this community as the first great place in New Mexico for adaptive rights. Um that that changes the whole game on the heads and beds and and then veterans and uh the different groups coming out here. So our Rec Trails Committee has been active on that and we have a um a good group, half of them are are trekkers. Some have gone back to um their winter homes, but a lot of them are still permitted here in town on rec and trail issues. So our big goals are gonna be uh our big goals will be connectivity within the village proper. Um we still see a goal from the RV park out on on the highway. They're all coming in on e-bikes and can they ride into town and get groceries or to the cool summer nights on a greenbelt trail or a ride instead of driving in it? So how do we figure that out? Uh that was a plan in early years as well and it's still valid. Um we have issues right here on North Angel Fire Road where you cross from Cinderella Soul to Frank Young. And you've got to go over four curves across the street and that is not accessible. There's no pathway, there's no pedestrian crosswalk there, there's no hawk signal, pedestrian flashing signal right there at four thirty four on North Angel Fire where you could go to the grocery store and not have to worry about lights. So our group is thinking about pedestrian sidewalk access as well as trail stuff, just with this in-town connectivity. So that's where we're kind of thinking about. Those are our big goals, adaptive stuff and uh working with the resort to um manage help them manage their resources in town as well. But I know their crew's been out there, somebody doing a great work on the greenbelt stuff. So that's us. So we have intersection with um Streets Committee, we have intersection with Lodger's Tax Group. We have intersection with a number of other committees on the recreation and trail stuff. Anybody else want to share from their committee?
I'll share from, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll share from the wetland group. I don't know if you saw us out there, eager beavers, we were digging in the mud. Um we built um twenty posts uh for for beaver dam analogues. And we completed eight um with weaving them with the willow and the mud and the um spruce branches and all that weaving in there. And it was almost an immediate um effect and apologize, I can't.
We gotta cover it in the video.
Yeah, but it was almost an immediate effect and um so it spread out the water. And we've been working on this for two years and finally, you know, got our core permit in place, got our a lot of other documents and requirements uh in place. And um just all of a sudden, everything came together and it was, it's it's absolutely amazing. And now we're working on putting some rocks into uh what we call Ski Hill Creek, which is really just the creek that comes down from the ski hill or run between all the businesses and such. And um to try to prevent some of the sediment from getting into the the wetland from there. But um anyway, a lot of progress, we're so excited. Um and uh that, our group is really just a small group of volunteers that um have been together for about four years. Um concerned mostly about the uh south, the south side of North Angel Fire Road, you might say. But that is on resort property and they have friends to do some things uh to improve that as well. And hopefully make those things an amenity for this village, something beautiful that works better in a natural way. So anyway, um and do you have any questions about wetland stuff or anything?
Isn't that, I just have one question, I mean, I probably know this, but the creek, isn't there a easement that runs up that creek? Or a hiking trail, walking trail?
There, well, so the village owns section that's back here. Now, on the other side of the creek, now it's not perfect, there's a there's a line in the creek, you know, does the meander, right? And so the the other side is greenbelt that's owned by the resort. And so um in this section, now that other section is all greenbelt owned by the resort. Now, the village has an agreement to maintain Cinderella Soul Trail with the resort, my understanding. I haven't seen this written in paper anywhere, but it's my understanding. Um and then this part is maintained by the village because it is village property. Is that kind of?
Are you talking about Ski Hill Creek?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ski Hill Creek, there's a forty foot wide village drainage easement.
Okay.
That is um now the the property is still owned by the the neighboring um landlords, okay? But there's a village easement that goes all the way up to a hundred and fifty feet west of South Angel Fire Road.
That's what I was, yeah, thanks.
And that then from there on is a sixty foot wide piece of property owned by the resort that follows the creek on up. I went and got all the documents from the Colfax County. So um that's why we're working in the village section, because we're working in the drainage. So thank you, good, I'm glad it's working. We're working with the resort to make that happen, so they're they're very supportive. BJ, were you gonna talk?
Oh, I was just gonna briefly, uh since Mayor Tim Howe couldn't make it. Again, he's on the Streets and uh Infrastructure Committee, Rose and Infrastructure. Um so that committee is focusing more on, that committee got a late start and it was one of our more pressing issues that we wanted to tackle immediately, uh whether when the weather was available to do so and our our new fiscal year started in July. So we had basically put a plan together to to rebuild um certain sections of the road. The Streets Committee is now working on uh projects for budgeting consideration for the next fiscal year. Among some other things. Uh and then I am the liaison to the Airport Transition Committee. And I just want to say that that is moving very quickly, uh but it also is gonna take a long time just with the government, intergovernmental transfer and also the biggest thing being uh FAA being involved. But with that said, we've already uh ordered a we've determined a list of what is needed to make this transfer. At least start the process, immediate things are a boundary survey, so that's been ordered, an appraisal that's been ordered. Uh both of which should be, they'll be done by the end of the year at the latest. Um as well as the county is having, uh is inventorying all the assets, that we know exactly what's there. Uh that committee's working diligently to gather information and and have everything available. We're we're uh put out an RFP, uh it's currently out now for a consultant specifically for this transfer, which these type of things have happened, but it's especially niche. Uh and we've we've identified a few people and helped uh get some other respondents to have a good selection of candidates. So the other piece of that puzzle that we're just starting to uh push for, as you may or may not know, there's scheduled flights coming in, starting December, I believe nineteenth will be the the first flight. From what I understand, you can purchase tickets now. Uh it's Advanced Air, what's the name of the website though?
Advanced, Advanced Airlines, yeah.
AdvancedAirlines.com, I believe.
Exactly.
But again, you you can start purchasing those tickets now. They uh have indicated that it's a nine passenger plane, but they're gonna offer six tickets per flight. Um so that they allow plenty of uh leeway for weight on luggage and so on. And we'll work out those ones, so as you know, flying into high altitude, it's more uh getting out of here can be a trick. I believe the schedule is to park Albuquerque at eleven AM in Angel Fire before noon and then depart for Albuquerque at one o'clock. So that's that's the current uh tentative schedule, I believe, six days a week.
That's incredible.
With that too, we're looking at, there's been some concerns about a few things that need to happen to the airport facility quickly to accommodate passengers and luggage and a few other things. So the season's extremely short at this point, but we're gonna try to make a few improvements. The uh Village of Angel Fire gave the county of Colfax, which was thirty thousand dollars a couple of years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Uh I wish.
Three years ago.
Three years ago. Of which only thirteen thousand of that has been spent, so there's seventeen thousand dollars sitting to be spent on that airport. And so we're gonna immediately do some uh concrete work, weather permitting, we're just starting on that process this week. But uh we want to make sure that there's a good pathway for luggage, luggage carts and visitors. I mean, so when they get off, the the from the tarmac to the terminal, they're not walking through any mud or gravel as the current situation may be. So just little things like that. But the village is now, because we realize it's gonna take a minimum of a year for this transfer to be completed, and that's being optimistic, a year to eighteen months is the is the timeframe that we're looking at. The village is now entering into negotiations with the county, with Colfax County. To basically lease, manage that airport uh in the short term. So that we can start getting our arms around operations, snow removal. One of the bigger concerns that we have is just the the schedule uh and what it takes to get the snow off of those runways and then the time it takes for the runway to to completely clear. So we want to make sure that we're not, we're gonna lose some of those scheduled flights to weather, that's a given, whether it's snow or wind. But we want to minimize that as much as possible. Uh so that's that's where we're at with the Airport Committee. And then one other thing I want to, I think is important to the comprehensive plan is Liberty Square. So we don't really have a committee, it's more gonna be a, it's gonna be a collaboration of the committees. And so not to step on the lodger's tax report, but the big one that I want to point out to, for Liberty Square, uh which is, many people know as Plaza del Sol. The technical legal description is Liberty Square, roughly twenty-one acres back behind here. We have had that boundary survey in Topo done and we're now in the planning stage for that property. Um but as many of you may be aware, lodger's tax, when I came into office in January, was about two point two million. We attempted to spend a million dollars of that, um we got delayed in doing so. Uh hopefully that will be rectified this evening and we can move forward. But now we have three million dollars, we can't seem to spend it fast enough. So one of the plans that we have in place, and this was actually discussed with our auditor when we had our 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 annual audit done. But it, the suggestion was, and I think it was a great one, is to have a big expenditure where we could actually put some money down, but also commit to payments throughout a, you know, so so basically borrow money from the state at a at a low interest rate. But we we we're physically or we're financially, physically sound enough to do that. And so one thing that we're trying to plan and want to see done back here in Liberty Square is a large, I'm proposing a twelve to fifteen million dollar budget on a hybrid building is the goal uh that can be opened up in the summertime, closed down in the wintertime. And 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 we need this facility because, as you know, the the events that we've been holding in Frontier Park have been successful and every year have been born more popularity. But quite frankly, on many occasions, we got from the park. There's still gonna be days and times that there's perfect little uh uh events that can be held there, but for the most part, as you probably were, if you visit, parking is becoming an issue. Quite frankly, capacity at certain times has even become an issue. So we need to start looking forward uh to the future to help alleviate some pressure up there. We may as soon as this summer have uh, for lack of a better term, we're gonna have, once it's planned out, the proper place. But we'd like to see this this as early as the spring, but just a nice landscaped, grassy area uh with a large, for lack of a better term, circus tent um to where we can start holding some of the events there, have everybody park there, that sort of thing. And start uh transitioning uh events from Frontier over to that facility and then eventually into the uh the larger facility. I would, I would anticipate um the lawn and tent happening this summer, spring, summer. And then if we can hold our schedule, mainly due to weather and planning, but groundbreaking on that new events, uh convention type center uh is is in the spring of twenty twenty-six. So all big things taking place back here. And then i- i- it's it's great for our community, um but we're also looking at building a new fire station in the same period of time where we desperately need a new facility um to house our firefighters and paramedics. And so along the same timeline, you'll see that the proposed site for that, which we're working with an architect currently, is right next door to this building to the south on that piece of property, which directly and indirectly ties into the the land that we've been discussing. So we're in that planning phase, but we expect to start seeing some things happen with that property as soon as the spring and summer. Uh so that's really all I have, good, this is our.
How soon with with regard to that tent? How soon would you anticipate being able to take bookings?
So uh we'll have, we'll we'll be putting that all together over the winter. But we really want to come out strong in the spring and we figure it's a it's a thirty day project if planned correctly. And again, there's, it's mainly uh for like some sod, some trees, lens dipping, and then the tent. And so we'd like to have to have that opportunity, but we'll be able to provide more information um later this winter.
The infrastructure going there.
There there is infrastructure there, um so we'll be looking to uh share that progress with the public and uh.
The public will be able to book it?
Uh well, it'll be, it'll be more for, yes, we're like, it's like the kid, like the community center, we want to see it active. Um we will have a schedule of events that the village will be putting on, but we would gladly look at anything outside of those timeframes to keep uh to keep things uh active, if I can use a better term.
Seems like a really great asset for bringing heads and beds.
Exactly, well, I mean, that's the ultimate goal with the lodger tax funds. Uh right now, as you may know, there's large, larger uh music acts, you know, would have a special, we'll struggle, there's not a good venue currently. Again, we've outgrown Frontier, the ones that we have had are great, but we we've really outgrown that. We need to have something that protects equipment and performers, uh again, that we can open up, see people. Uh and then in the wintertime, have a a nice sized facility where you could have uh any kind of uh, again, we'd love to book it to outside conferences, anything to just bring people to town.
So road, sorry, road that's gonna go to that, is that gonna be a paved road or is that just a gravel road for now or?
So again, planning and budgeting, but I would like to, I would like to, I would like to. So again, planning and budgeting, but I would like to, I would like to, I would like to continue to focus my part, one of my personal focuses is on paving in the core, so I'd like to continue to see that. Uh back to the streets committee, again, they're working on this stuff and they were delayed on some projects, uh for instance, South Angel Fire Road um and a couple of other uh areas on the core were budgeted and scheduled to be paved this year. We were, just were not able to get asphalt uh between the construction, getting it over here and with the big projects going on in Towson, Espinaula, they consume the asphalt. Imagine if you've been to Towson lately, you know, I'm hoping that they are able to complete their project this season, in the town of Towson, much less this project here. So we're gonna be patient, and we have no choice, uh but those those projects will continue and then we're looking at other options, adopting Crestview, uh possibly looking at pavement on stage line. The pavement, wait, again, we'll look at the core, make sure that we can maintain what we're paving, that's a big issue with the paving, it still requires maintenance and uh so as that, and we get more comfortable with it, then we can start expanding from there, um but uh obviously been very pleased with the amount of roads that have been rebuilt just the in the last really forty-five days. Um and and they continue to make great progress, I believe we're gonna hit twenty miles, pushing twenty miles?
This fiscal year, but but come winter will be fourteen for sure, maybe fifteen miles. And then uh so then we'll probably have to wait till May, and the fiscal year ends June thirtieth, so we're thinking May and June, another five miles.
And 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 then a new start there, so um one of the goals that I had was by the end of my first term, rebuilding ten miles of road a year, so uh I have to thank everybody involved for allowing it to get uh fifteen and possibly fifteen miles in the first calendar year and twenty miles in our first full fiscal year, so uh that's all positive stuff. Um so again, that's what I have for the streets, uh roads, infrastructure, you actually touched on our skater systems and water meters. Uh that's huge, to be able to track that information accurately. Um so that's that's, that was a big undertaking as well, and the airport. So if you don't have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to turn it over to these gentlemen and their committees.
Fortunately, here are your dressed, till addressed trail and drag, we did most of the uh lodger's tax committee. Um tourism, Greg's put out a new calendar, you know, of events, which you can easily go online and look at what, you know, the uh village events are gonna be held, so you'll know kind of when uh Liberty Square might be available for other options, but that's definitely the plan. That parking area too, I think for Liberty Square will be, will be perfect for people to park, for parking access to wa- get on the hiking trails.
Well, not only the hiking trail, but we're trying to look for places to to alleviate people that have difficult driveways, yes. Airbnbs, or I'm sorry, STRs, not to to give a trademark, the short-term rentals. Anyone that needs parking, have a place in the core where they they can leave a vehicle if necessary, um two-wheel drives that come to visit, that sort of thing. So yeah, the parking area down there is huge for for lodgers.
And forgive me if I'm maybe getting ahead with rumor, but I've heard talk that maybe the food trucks will move in that direction as well?
Heard rumor of that too. So I I I would just say there hasn't been any uh formal discussion about that, more planning for that. Um I think, I think the food trucks in that venue where they're currently at is wonderful and I still feel like town can support uh more and more variety, I mean, currently I love what that park has to offer, just in terms of variety, if I can help. And then of course, you know, we have a couple others in town, but yeah, we wanna, back to just a long-term planning, we hope to see um not only what we're doing, but help spur maybe some growth in and around some of the resort property on the south side that Allison alluded to, or they have private property with the green belt space where the creek runs in between. Hoping if this will help spur private development as well um in any number of ways, so uh.
So people will know where our town center is.
Yeah.
If I can add, the visitor center is looking really good and I appreciate the fact that we prioritize Christmas lights, so good job, Mary Lindsay.
Well, and then you know, I don't wanna get ahead of Greg, but since you brought it up uh in the Village Voice, we're actually, so we're having a big Christmas tree lighting, which is annually literally held at the visitor center in that parking area over there. And then uh the village has also been able to secure, um I believe, uh two hundred and fifty dollar gift certificate from Alpine, which we're offering uh as a prize for the best decorated uh home business in in town, so we encourage people to send in their pictures and uh we're encouraging people to get festive, and so we feel like we have to lead by example. We wanted to do more, by the way, we actually wanted to put Christmas lights on all our light poles, but unfortunately the voltage situation didn't work out, but Jake's dark sky committee is gonna have us replace them.
Gotta check your lumen there.
Make sure we can plug them into those.
And then the scavenger hunt.
Oh yeah, oh, Greg's doing the scavenger hunt on Black Friday. Um offering a scavenger hunt, bring a local business that wants to participate. So we're trying to encourage people that, you know, especially in our shoulder seasons to visit um our our uh village businesses and 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 have some fun along the way.
Has some big prizes, I think, coming with the scavenger hunt.
Yeah, so keep an eye out for all that good stuff.
So so may I add two thoughts on the streets committee, one is um defensible idea, so I think when all it works and the committee is deciding on what streets get service treated, improved over the others, how those decisions got made, so you can defend it and and no one's gonna scream that, how come you didn't fix my street and?
Well, of course, that's what we get, and of course, most of the people
Yeah.
um uh are most concerned about their street or the
Right.
way they get to there. So the way we looked at it initially is number one, volume of traffic and uh the condition of the current road. So there's a lot of roads that were going primitive, in other words, all the base courses are gone. Uh there's actually boulders, subgrade that have exposed themselves. So there's still plenty of that, um there's still high traffic areas that need attention, there's still um roads going primitive, but we, basically the combination of the two, major arteries, um the the condition of the road and uh the cost also to rebuild said road. So with that, that was the general um criteria given. And again, we identified some of the more known ones, um and addressed them this year, and and that's currently what the committee's working on now is uh.
I think it'd be good to have information that comes on, here's, here's how the committee makes, where the public work department is making decisions on road improvements. So those are great criteria, but just to have those?
Yeah.
Then it's gonna save people to come screaming at counselor, you, or the manager about, you didn't fix my road, well, here's the process we're going through. You're down here in year thirty, thirty-five.
The timeline.
Yeah.
So so I would just add that
They will, but.
Public, public safety was another criteria that was considered.
Access.
Which is highly related to volume, but not always, uh some places are lower volume roads, but maybe it's the only uh uh ingress to a neighborhood or something.
Sure.
So those things are considered as well. And um so this year, because of timing, we wanted to get things done, uh we made those decisions. Uh we're hoping that the roads and infrastructure uh will be able to, this over the winter, help us prioritize the roads that we're gonna attack next year. Uh we just didn't have the time to wait for them to do it uh this year, so we just had to pull the trigger and make some decisions. But uh we will be looking for feedback from roads and infrastructure moving forward.
The other, that parking lot was um for vehicles, I think it came to my mind when we were in the uh ready, set mode a couple of years back is um the people who have trailers or the stuff, they needed a place to get away from the house and put it in a non-fungible area, they think that place could also serve as a staging area for people's RVs or trailers or campers, whatever they might have, they wanna pull out of their their house, so.
And along that line, and it's something that definitely relates to tourism and also public safety uh is our initiative currently, which uh we don't have a committee necessarily for, but chief co-group is working on is trying to get a uh a zone, um the HOV zone, ROV zone. Um in other words, where you can take legally licensed uh off-road vehicles not only on our uh village roads, which they're currently allowed, but down Highway four thirty-four from the blinking light to Forest Road seventy-six, so beyond the village limits into the county to Forest Road seventy-six. A- and the goal there is to a few things, one is the only current place to to ride these vehicles in town is in our neighborhood. So instead of people just driving around in the neighborhoods, for lack of a better place to go, they can actually leave Angel Fire head to the national forest um and where there are off-road vehicle trails there. Two, allow people to take trash to the dumpster, the transfer station, or even access the car wash, um that sort of thing. But at the same time, I think we will attract more of those vehicles. Uh I think they're coming regardless, uh and so we wanna accommodate it more, I know Red River's the great thing I have in uh chief co-group, he's had a lot of experience in Red River as their town marshal and then as also as their county sheriff and beyond, and so we have a lot of advantages that they don't have, but uh we feel like if we can do this responsibly, back to that, it gives a place, people a place to park them, uh trailers and so on and go from there, so. Again, the goal is actually to reduce traffic on our village roads, if at all possible, um and accommodate the national forests. And that's just a trend that is in every mountain community to some degree. And so we want, we don't wanna uh, we wanna be able to have our residents and visitors alike take advantage of that, but also, you know, keep them out of places that they're not supposed to be. Uh so again, i- it's gonna affect um some things here in town with that, uh and we have to address both the positive and negative to come with it.
So I'll try to go through my my committees, there is, I mean, Gary, a committee member here for the dark sky committee. Um the goal of that committee is basically reducing overall light pollution within the village of Angel Fire. Uh and we uh met with the state chapter of the International Dark Sky Association. Uh they had been engaged in doing the same municipal code writing in both Albuquerque and Los Alamos. Uh we really used the Los Alamos template, it's a lot more applicable to us than Albuquerque, is is our first pass. Uh we've had our first presentation at a council work session, uh and since that time have been going out soliciting feedback from uh businesses in town, uh some of them up and down four thirty-four. I've also been going out soliciting feedback from several of the property managers that manage most, if not all, of the condo associations in town, getting feedback on, okay, we've we've asked for something fairly prescriptively strict, but you have an outdoor lighted, you know, three-floor uh staircase that somebody's gotta navigate, what what legal requirements do they have to provide lighting? So I I would say we're in the ironing the details uh phase there on on how to, what we can and really what we would not be appropriate to limit. Um but essentially, we're we're looking for as little light trespass from property to property, these are gonna be, you know, lumen caps, uh time cutoffs, uh those types types of things. Um Gary, is that a pretty quick and dirty summary, I I think, did you wanna add anything to that?
Yes, and uh you mentioned, of course, the Christmas lighting and we're we're working on that too, and also the area lighting per acre, that sort of thing, but um the other thing that I'd like to say is, other committees were making reports here and they were talking about uh things like Allen Fields that are gonna require lighting, but we would like to interface with those committees to make sure we're all on the same page, and I guess that's what this whole meeting's about.
Absolutely, correct. We obviously want the um tourism dollars that having lights at Allen Field could bring in the form of hosting softball tournaments for local use, those types of things. The flip side, I I think what's driven this, what we've heard from the community, what was driving the dark sky ordinance is we have a tremendous number of unoccupied residences here in town, uh some of them have lights left on year-round. Uh some of them are a very large number of lights, so uh we we're looking at it from that perspective, but also from the tourism perspective. Get Gary is an amateur astronomer at this point, uh we think there can be some opportunity for night sky viewing. Uh if you go just north of us, uh between Alamosa and and Great Sand Dunes, there is an area up there that is a dark sky community, and they market that. They they bring people into town when there are meteor showers and other events, um you know. We think long-term that doing some events uh for stargazing out at the library or or at the airport would be a great use of of lodger tax dollars, but it's it's getting this ordinance written and passed in such a way that's manageable, that gives us something to go out there and sell to tourists and and residents alike.
Is it, is it goal of dark skies certification?
Um so it it depends, um you could be a dark sky community, let's look at this a couple of ways. When we look at the Albuquerque, for Albuquerque to be certified dark sky is going to be a much different threshold than Los Alamos and then for us. I I think some of the big questions left are path lighting, Christmas lighting, things that we want to have, but actually being certified. I think that depends a lot on, as Mary Lindsay pointed out, we're gonna have a tremendous number of streetlights that are not gonna be in compliance, and that's gonna be a fairly heavy cost to pay, so I think, could we get there? Yes. At what cost and how long is it gonna take us to do that? That's a bit of an open-ended question right now.
And back to that, so I will say replacing our streetlights currently is not at the top of the priority list.
Right.
But if it's in our plan, which makes it to the comp plan, which we can then seek grants for energy efficiency, dark sky, that sort of thing, anywhere that that fits in, we'll have the the uh data to support that, uh and hopefully be able to do something there.
Also understand that the way that the draft is written now, there is a a fairly long time to compliance, particularly for commercial operators. You know, we're not trying to go give the commercial operator, here's a a bill that you weren't anticipating that's due next year, you know, let's let's give people some time to bring themselves into compliance over over several years.
Yeah, I'd like to add that we're talking about a grandfather clause, which is kind of what you alluded to here.
Correct.
But also any new lighting would have to comply.
Yeah, so if it ages out requirement, uh exactly, so.
So that's dark sky committee, Gary, unless you've got anything else to add. Um I also liaise onto the fire adaptive committee, uh that committee's been meeting for some time, obviously with the goal of of increasing thinning within the village limits. Um essentially where we are now is we are stuck still with the old uh fire adaptive ordinance, which is not being enforced. Um years ago, when they were still using that ordinance, we created far too much material, so a lot of what we've been working on uh uh specifically now with Chief Vance, some of you have met. Um there's a goal this winter to clean out what we call the pit. If you've ever been back to the transfer station, you see a large sunken area that's full of old dried-out wood material. There's a plan in place to get rid of uh most if not all of that material this year, to move all of our burning activities a- and to use that pit more effectively for burning. We're currently keeping up with the intake of slash that's coming in now, but there is no enforcement in place. So we've developed several plans for, you know, if if we start to have more material come in than we can burn on a day-to-day basis, what's plan B? What's plan C? How do we put an ordinance in place and keep it active uh over the next ten, fifteen, point, thirty years? This is going to be a very long-term process, uh getting to a defensible space ordinance. We actually have uh on council meeting tonight, we're uh, there's a a an agenda item to move us to the ISO twenty twenty-one standard. We're a couple of years behind what the state is on, and so having Chief Vance uh engaged in that uh and and really has been a huge help. We've hired a new person based on some grant writings who is going to be our communication specialist, hi, sorry, we haven't met yet.
No, you're all good.
Um we also are in process of of working on, uh there's some technical questions on the the current draft of the defensible space that myself nor the committee members are really qualified to answer, so we're looking for some help from. myself nor the committee members are really qualified to answer, so we're looking for some help from state forestry. We've identified a contract. We think we can, we can help get us past those few technical hurdles. But really, that committee is is engaged similar to the Dark Sky, this is ordinance riding is what they're doing. Um, they're they're, we have an old broken ordinance. We need to get a new one that works long-term and get it implemented sooner rather than later. Um, so that's Fire Adaptive Committee, again, ordinance riding. Um, probably my busiest committee right now is the Workforce Housing Committee. Uh, we've been meeting since the first of the year. Some of you have probably seen, we closed on the four-and-a-quarter acres behind Zev's. Uh, it's accessed in that gate that is not a road now between Zev's and the Alpine parking lot. Uh, we have ordered the site survey for that uh property. And here very quickly are going to be working on some preliminary layouts, on how many housing units we think we can get in that four-and-a-quarter acres. Um, that presentation happened at one of the previous uh council work sessions. We want this to be a neighborhood. Um, you know, we we understand that a large number of our village employees are going to live there. Uh, Manager Weir and I have had some initial conversations. We're working on an internal survey to figure out how many of our current seventy-plus employees would look to slide over uh into that housing option when it's available. Uh, and I believe last time we checked, we have twelve open wrecks for the Village of Angel Fire. People, these people we'd like to hire, we have a position for, but without housing, how do you hire that person? Um, so.
That's the biggest roadblock currently to hire them.
Correct.
Yeah, people responding, ready to go. They can't find a place to live.
If we're guessing, we we think the village is probably going to be occupied twenty-five plus of the housing stock that goes in there. And we're looking, probably the first two layouts we're going to do are a thirty-unit layout and a forty-unit layout. Uh, trying to figure out how much green space we need to leave in there, not just for snow plowing, though that's important. But we may put a playground in there. We may put some picnic tables, again, to have this be more of a neighborhood feel.
Multi-story?
Uh, no. So the current plan, uh, as it's laid out right now, these are single-story modular units, essentially. We're primarily looking at two-bed, two-bath and three-bed, two-bath. Um, most of that was driven by the costs. We could not find a single-bedroom tiny home, if you will, but when you penciled it, you're better off with the two-two than you are the one-one. Um, so this is really what we're kind of considering Phase One. Uh, many of you may know, we looked at two different pieces of dirt, uh, got evaluated by the committee and by council. But if we're looking between thirty and forty units, ultimately, we would love to, I think Mary Lindsay brought up earlier, we would love to find a private developer to be doing workforce housing. The challenge with the private developers, they've got to gather up the money, all of the tax credits, state and federal, and hope it comes out of the ground. So we've had conversations with some of those guys, but truthfully, we would love to see Phase One of village housing spur two or three private developers to come in and do exactly the same thing. Um, I I don't think any of us believe that Phase One is going to fully address the housing needs for the Village of Angel Fire uh or the other businesses in town. So, um, yes, sir.
May I ask where the other plot of land is?
So the other plot of land we evaluated was a five-acre plot out on Highway sixty-four, uh, just west of the DOT lot. Where the holes are, yes. Um, so that that was the other plot of land that we evaluated. And and I think there was pretty broad story. It's a nice, it's a nice piece of property. What we liked about the Zev's one ultimately, and I think why it went out is it's walkable. Uh, you could, you could work for, you know, the resort has employees that walk that far. We have employees that could get that far. You're nestled between the hardware store, Zev's, and the lumberyard. It's a, it's a pretty good area to have employees uh situated. So um, in the immediate term, the survey's going to get done, the initial preliminary layouts are going to get done, and we'll end up picking one. The plan is to go through and do all of that engineering work through the winter. Uh, so come spring, we're ready for ground site work for roads, underground work for utilities. And the plan is to have housing units start showing up here next summer for occupation.
This time next year, we hope to have people uh occupying those structures.
Correct. So um workforce housing is really, that committee's been blowing and going because it's, we have governance draft. Uh, we had to get uh MFA ordinances uh both here and Manager Weir's helped at the county level. You're required to do that. We've interfaced with Rocky for many hours on grant writing. We're still fingers crossed that MFA is going to give us some money towards uh this project that we hope to have people living in next summer.
Are those rentals or for sale?
So no, the way these will be set up now, we're not subdividing the plots out. These will be rentals owned and operated by the Village of Angel Fire. Um, the governance documents give first uh choice to village employees. Uh, and then after that, it is employees and contractors of any local businesses. Uh, I suspect that we're going to end up with some type of a lottery to fill whatever remaining units are left over. Because, you know, if we have twelve units left over, I bet we have far more than twelve applicants for those units. So um, you know, based on what that layout looks like and what other private developers, you know, the question will be, how soon do we look at Phase Two dirt? Do we find a developer that wants to do that instead of us? Uh, those, those are kind of the open questions as far as housing goes.
Does uh the private developer get assistance from the village to go through the process of getting grants and things like that?
So that was one of the reasons we did the MFA ordinance. Um, we have to have that on the books to qualify for MFA monies. But private developer qualify for MFA monies. Um, I think ICAT is the IRS program that private developers qualify. So any developer um that wants to can come work with the Village of Angel Fire. Now, we're somewhat limited on, you know, we can't go build the structures for you, but we can get you infrastructure and things to your site for development. So there are some, you know, financial advantages for a developer working with us, working with state, working with beds. We just haven't had one get all the way to the finish line and and break ground. Um, so that's why we're moving forward with doing it ourselves, because, you know, we can't really wait. You know, we need the firefighters, we need the police officers, we need the accountants, we need water and street guys, and and all those folks got to live somewhere. The other big benefit out of this that that uh Manager Weir's pointed out is a large number of our workforce right now does not live within the village limits. And it hurts us from a median income perspective on all of our grant writing activities, not specific to workforce housing. But any grant you apply for, they're going to ask you two questions. How much cash do you have in the bank and what's your median income? And our median income right now is not favorable for our grant writing activities. So getting our employees to live here benefits us from grant writing, from, you know, shopping, GRT purposes. Uh, so until such time as uh somebody says stop, we're going to keep looking at rentals that we can own and occupy with our workforce.
And as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, and not to get into too much detail, but again, if if we want to assess the actual need here, we're going to be on the hook for these units. We have to have them built. Now, the benefit again to us doing is we can do it at cost, we can subsidize them. We have a short-term rental ordinance that's going to be going into effect shortly. Uh, we've already increased building permit fees and we're looking at some other things um to generate money that we're specifically going to spend on short-term housing. So in other words, we're able to keep uh the rental rates affordable. That's, that's the main reason a private developer hasn't got it. It's hard to make it penciled. Um, we we can have rents where people can afford to do this.
Um, I I will say, one of the things, we we haven't published all the data because we're still going to get back, but the employer survey, the one that's been out the longest, it's indicating we're two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred housing units short. This is not ten short.
Those are exactly the kind of issues we can put in that, you know, the bold statements for the comp plan, here are the issues on housing.
And so back to Scott's point, the the rentals, I think Phase One is definitely rentals, not even subdivided. Phase Two will probably be more of the same to satisfy an immediate need. Phase Three, because we do have opportunities in other parts of town, uh, that we feel like we might be able to work with people to make it profitable. Um, again, there's a lot of ways to go about it, but we would like to see properties then for sale in deed-restricted neighborhoods. So that there's not the short-term rental side of things. We're able to to offer the dirt at minimal cost to to attract builders that can then build for people that work their way up through these other units and ultimately want to own something. And then just continue to graduate from there. So there, there's a long-term plan there, but addressing the short-term needs is obviously our first goal.
Well, it's because those dozen employees that we need interface with all of our other projects. So it was, it was where the fire was biggest, I think the analogy was was put, that was our biggest need is we need twelve people as quick as we can find housing for them. So that was the, the end of the problem we decided to work on.
And from from my perspective, um, businesses wanting to move here have that major obstacle.
For sure. I think it's the biggest, quite frankly.
We're we're building a house right now and almost all of our contractors, subcontractors from out of town. And they're putting up entire teams in Airbnbs, or excuse me, STRs.
So that's, those are the summary of my three committees open.
It does, and I think as as Gary mentioned uh over here, there is this uh connect between recreation trails and yours. I can see already visualizing how you could do a half-mile loop pathway within this community. A small dog park and a playground or park area as a make it a community in itself. So I think we could, we'd be happy to provide some insight on that design idea for you, that community. And that's kind of stuff we want to see happen in these different groups. The lighting, whatever lighting happens in there too, would be along with what your goals are.
I think part of the Allen Fields discussion would be timing, like softball tournaments would be over around nine.
Sure.
And lots go out.
I I think right now we have ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Is is kind of our cutoff, so it's not something, you know, I I think I could see a a envision a spot too where if somebody did want to host a tournament later, well, let's give them a exception permit.
Cloudy day.
Yeah, exactly.
I just want to let you know, as of now, I actually play in these tournaments that we have here now. And they're all day long, but they're from like seven in the morning till five in the afternoon. So there's no late games. And we can imagine why, there's no lighting, but.
Well, there's a pretty big call for it. I mean, if you're in Albuquerque or somewhere and you want to have a nice, cool weather tournament, we'd love to have it.
Soccer tournaments, traveling youth leagues, there's a lot that we're missing out on there.
You'll catch me. Their activities are events. I'm serious.
Yeah, yeah.
They're real events, and people love traveling.
Riot festivals. Yeah.
All right. Any other uh reports or updates that anyone would provide on?
The other thing I uh I'd like to say is I know that, I mean, you used water waste, water and solid waste here, and I know y'all are inter- uh viewing director Efler uh on these topics, but um uh on these examples and other just examples, I mean, we have answers for all these questions.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, Kurt's a guy that did it.
And Arvin. He's got monthly user reports on that thing.
Yeah, so I've been, I definitely, I mean, right again, you've emailed this out. Uh, we'll just make sure that that our committees, I think, uh, have these built out as best as possible and back to uh, it is on our timeline.
It's, they're a timeline. So so Mary Anne, we we, I think going back, we anticipate providing council a draft. There's a rough draft in September and then time to to edit, modify that, and time for a November adoption, I think, is what we're going for. So that time period in the summertime is really the start, you know, all these groups got to be coming together and we'll be working with them all, trying to figure out how these goals align. Um, where is the most energy? Uh, and then you guys can be figuring out how how uh if we do the five-year plan or three-year plan after it's adopted, you guys sit down over the winter and come up with a work plan for the rest of it. So that whole conversation will need to happen among staff and um village leadership.
So I I will give you a word of warning that unlike prior uh administrations, uh, this administration is moving very fast. And so what you might gauge as uh ten years out may only be five. Uh, I mean, we did this, we're in a different twenty miles of road. There probably hasn't been twenty miles of road reconstructed in the village in the last twenty years.
I think we will, I think our committee is going to give you, I think our goal is a provision with here's all the the key goals and the recommended actions. And um through some sort of a process, we should have some, maybe it's next summer, maybe it's a um, there's a town hall around, same time there is the the June uh membership thing going on. There's a town hall around all these topics. And we give feedback in community that people are ranking or voting. And then after that, we sit down, well, here is the top three things in this area people want to work on. And then that's going to give you guys the the direction, okay, we need to come up with our actions or our implementation drives for these, these things after that. We, I think hopefully we can look at, you know, the summertime as a as uh a big opportunity to engage our part-time residents, full-time residents, but at the same time, I think all the community should be reaching out in different methods. Um, and I think this village voice is a really good strategy to use this winter, once we've got some handle on some of the stuff to get some feedback.
But now that it's really starting to take shape and becoming more of an informative newsletter, almost newspaper as far as the village is concerned, uh, we'll make efforts to make sure that it's getting out in numerous ways besides just the water.
Yeah, wonderful.
God, they did a great thing to have to come revisit this again in five years and not wait eighteen years.
To see all the, all the goals you've achieved, right?
Exactly. And not to say, again, there's, there was a lot of things on the two thousand and six plan that have happened. Um, but again, we're way overdue. Yeah, so.
And a lot of those goals are still relevant. That could still um carry over. They might be smart goals a little better than they were, but that stuff is still relevant and should get to need to be considered.
Yes, sir.
I was curious, on these committees, what is considered realistic timelines? How far does, how far do these go out? I mean, do you have a, is a comprehensive plan uh include things that are thirty years from now, or are they mostly just ten-year plans, fifteen-year plans?
They're mostly ten-year plans, um, though most communities rarely ever get around to updating them every ten years, so it's usually fifteen years. Um, but it depends on how it plays out. So I think the bigger question to me is what's the twenty-five-year vision for the community? And if you know what that vision is, then the comp plans can be updated to always move towards that vision.
Yeah, I mean.
If it's an outdoor recreation destination, if that's where we want to be, and we're thinking about UTV access and all these different things, then we know what that vision is. If it's not, it's using Angel Fire, then all this UTV stuff isn't exactly the right traction to go on if it's, so, you know, what's the vision?
Yeah, and you can only plan so far ahead when you have demographics that last time they did the plan, they they thought that we were going to grow by a certain amount. And you can only plan for so much or predict so much. And so you do want to plan for a long term, but you also have to know that you don't want to put a bunch of money into something that um, you don't necessarily have the need for.
Or you're not going to succeed at in a reasonable way.
Again, we want to be realistic, but ambitious at the same time.
Okay. And and the other thing, I think the key to a successful comprehensive plan is that it's got to be like a living, breathing document, which means you've got to continually, how many we, we can't do it in two thousand and eight and do it again in twenty twenty-four, which is what we currently have. It's got to be something that's being updated. Uh, statutory, well, like because I, my experience with these is in the school district, when I was on the school board. And the school districts are required to do one every five years. It's a statutory requirement. It's not for a village, but it should be. But it also, it hurts us when we try to get grants. A lot of grants will ask uh, you know, about for your comprehensive plan. And when you have one that's dated two thousand and eight, you know, they laugh at you. So um, we have motivation to keep it updated. But that's the thing, even though this committee is going to get us updated. And I know I've heard talk, well, then you're not going to need us. I'm like, no, you're going to start on the next one as soon as you're done with this one. And then we're going to, you know, it's like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, you know, it never ends. Uh, and that's the way it should be for a comprehensive plan, in my opinion.
Can we change the color?
Take ten years.
Mary Anne?
Um, uh, when we set up our comprehensive plan committee, our mission was to create a report that would look at the next five-year period and the next ten-year period with a renewal every five years. And that was in our mission statement. And I think that's a good guideline.
Well, I just want to end by saying thank you to everyone involved. Uh, the comprehensive plan is where this all comes together. But again, all the committee members, whether they're village committees or otherwise that are contributing to this. Uh, the reason we're able to make such progress in such short periods of time is because of all the volunteers, they're all strictly volunteers. Um, we, we have such a wealth of knowledge and just a brain trust in our community. And I feel like it hasn't been utilized to this degree in years, but in order to keep that interest up. But in order to keep that interest up, we've got to continue to act on these things. Nobody likes to spend all this time putting plans together just to shelf it and then revisit it again in sixteen years or whatever the case may be. So I can't thank um the counselors for spending their time, not just with these council meetings, but liaisons to these. Mark Manley, I think, is on about fifteen of the twenty committees. I don't know how he gets anything done for the resort, but uh that guy's a place. So no, but in all seriousness, everybody, and thank everybody for being here today. So uh with that, I think we'll adjourn. You're all welcome back at five thirty for our regular council meeting.